Good evening. This is the Planning Board meeting on Tuesday, October 11th, 2011. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I would like to open up the meeting for public comments on those items that are not on the agenda, looking at the vast audience out there.
Nice thought. Nice, fast, nice.
I will close the public comment period. Next, I'd like to have the minutes reflect that Val Shelton, the Vice Chairman, cannot be here tonight, and Rick McMiniman has been appointed to replace -- an alternate has been appointed to replace Val. Next, we'll have the review -- review and approval of the minutes of the September 13th meeting. Are there any corrections, additions, deletions that anyone would like to make? Rick?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the September 13th, 2011. Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Saying none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay. Thank you very much. The minutes are approved. Next on the agenda is a public hearing to amend Title III Land Use Code and Regulations, Chapter Five subdivision regulations, and Chapter Six site plan regulations in accordance with RSA 675:6 and RSA 675:7. The purpose of these amendments is to update the town's storm water management regulations as contained within the subdivision and site review regulations. Should I read all of this into the minutes? Is that necessary?
Well, why don't you just read the first paragraph?
Whatever is -- I did that.
And then the first section of each subdivision and site review.
Number one, to promote the infiltration of storm water on-site to recharge groundwater, aquifers, streams, and wetlands. Number two, assure water quality treatment is included in storm water designs. Number three, include methods for controlling the peak flow after development from having no net increase from before development conditions for various storm events through the use of low-impact development, LID, techniques, and other best management practices. And four, update erosion and sedimentation control measures to meet current standards for non-point source pollution. Diane, would you like to lead this? We have the gentleman that worked with the Town of Newmarket on the update of these regulations.
Yes, Mr. Archery from VHB Sierra this evening to hopefully answer any technical questions that may come up. I just wanted to give a brief overview for the planning board. We made some suggested changes at our last meeting in September, and I've gone through the regulations, and I have addressed all of the planning board's questions and concerns. A couple of things I did want to mention that I failed to mention at the last meeting. I've included a rate increase for our posting requirements for the subdivision and the site review regulations. We're finding that LEO notices are running about $75 to $85 per application, so we're suggesting that the fees be increased to $75 from $40. Also, the butter notification is $7 per butter, and I believe in the subdivision regulations, it still had the old rate, so we've increased that. Also, Rick Malosky, our Public Works Director, had made a couple of recommended changes to the road specifications, and at the last meeting they were noted, but there wasn't an explanation. I did talk with Rick Malosky, and he is recommending that these changes be made to really bring our local standards up to current A standards for the base course level and for the paving course. So we're increasing it from -- bear with me. I think it was three inches for the top course of the gravel base, from three inches to six inches.
Page 26.
On page 26, thank you. And also, he's recommending that the wearing course be an inch and a half as opposed to an inch, which it is currently. And so we're asking that those changes be incorporated into the subdivision regulations. And we have subsequent to my sending out a draft, we've received a memo from Jessica Baysay, is how you say her last name? She is on the Conservation Commission, and she has been serving as their liaison to the Stormwater Regulation Committee, and she's made some recommended editorial-type changes, and I have gone through all of them, and I've copied her comments, and I've redlined on the copy that you have in front of you suggested changes in response to her email. I thought all of her changes were very helpful and appropriate. There was a question that came up on the standards for the subdivision site review regulations, that they should be consistent with respect to requiring information about the 100-year flood, and she wasn't sure if we had discussed this at our staff at our storm water committee meeting, and we had, and it was decided by the committee that we would ask for data for the 100-year storm for both subdivision and site review regulations. However, any drainage structures would only have to be designed for the 50-year storm, and that was the consensus of the committee. So that's why the standards appear a little bit different in one section from the other. So if you'd like to take a minute and go through the redline changes that I'm suggesting on this copy, and I would ask that they be incorporated in any motion tonight, if there is one, to move forward with the acceptance of the new regulations. And I guess I'd like to turn it over to Bill if he has any further comments that he'd like to share with us at this point.
No, I don't really have any.
Could you come up to the podium, sir?
I don't have anything specific. I know last time, last meeting in September, and I apologize for not being here, but you guys had a lengthy discussion about the buffer issue as well, and you decided to retract that as a minimum requirement, which we were cross-referencing the wetland overlay zoning, that stormwater BMPs would be located consistent with the wetland overlay district. And I mean, that's fine. I just want to say, you know, for the record, I mean, there wasn't any intent to try to be more restrictive than what's already on the ordinances themselves in the wetland district itself. So it was just more or less a reminder to planning board members and applicants that other ordinances may come into play when locating stormwater BMPs. Sometimes those things slip through the cracks when you're focused on drainage and you're not thinking about other ordinances. So I just wanted to clarify that. I mean, that's fine.
Okay. Thank you very much.
One more question. In terms of the 50-year storm versus the 100-year storm, to me, it bears considering that the 50-year storm, as we think of it now, takes into account existing buildup and existing pervious surfaces. If you plan for the 100-year storm, you're actually planning for future construction, future pervious surfaces that could -- I'm not sure what the, you know, expected rate of growth is in our area, but depending on how often these ordinances are revisited, it might be a good idea to be conservative about the 50-year -- when you consider the 50-year storm or the 100-year storm because of the future increase in pervious surfaces that rapidly contribute to that, because we've seen that we also are not -- we're not isolated. We're downstream, so to speak, of other communities. So what other communities do also affects what happens to us. So if communities that are upstream of us, so to speak, build, create impervious surfaces, that all adds to the likelihood of a 50-year storm suddenly becoming a 100-year storm.
Yep. I think I understand your question. And it's an interesting way of looking at the storm, but it actually, the 50- and the 100-year storm is not based on a timeline of development per se. It's really just a statistical analysis of the probability of a certain size storm occurring.
Yes.
And the difference between a 50-year storm is, say, five inches of rain in a 24-hour period, whereas a 100-year storm is six and a half inches. You probably know it right off the top of your head, Eric.
I understand that difference because it does not take into account an increase in impervious surfaces. I think one might want to err on the side of being conservative in designing for a 100-year storm or a 75-year storm.
Okay. And the reason that it was not included in terms of designing structures to mitigate for the 100-year storm is because it requires that much more space to retain the volume from a 100-year storm versus the 50-year storm. So where a stormwater BMP may be a tenth of an acre in size to handle a 50-year storm, it would be more like a half an acre for a 100-year storm. It's really sort of a size scale issue, and the model ordinance that went out, put out by New Hampshire DES also suggests not to mitigate for the 100-year storm, to build BMPs to have no net peak increase in runoff for the 100-year storm. So we were kind of following that model. It becomes a very onerous requirement to handle a 100-year storm.
I understand. So you feel that the 50-year storm is adequate even in light of increasing development?
Well, over time, you know, as more development occurs, the next person, the next applicant that comes in and has to, you know, if he's dealing with other off-site runoff from other development, he now has to consider that. But usually, you're dealing with just a site-by-site situation, you know, what's coming off your site. So, you know, you're not dealing really with past development on your site, you know, as time goes on, you know, unless you're doing a redevelopment as such. But it's not necessarily looking at the entire watershed. You're looking at the applicant is concerned with his site.
Okay.
And dealing with the runoff from that site. So it's not the entire watershed.
So in some instances, it may be it should be designed for a less frequent storm, and in some instances, not, depending on the site. And so as it's written now, you feel it covers sufficiently?
Well, again, think of it as the net increase from current conditions to the proposed conditions from that site. So however impervious they make that, however, you know, acres of pavement, the harder it is to not have a net increase, the more stormwater BMPs are going to be required. So that's really what's involved. It doesn't really address other development that's occurring outside of his site area, unless it's draining through their site. So, I mean, that's more of a broader planning issue, you know, the town, where you're talking about watersheds within the town. It's not really a site development issue.
Okay. Peter, you have a question?
I have a question. Perhaps you have the answer for me. Who sets a standard for 50-year storm, 100-year storm, and so forth?
The state DES generally set the standards for that.
How often is that up to change, or how often has it changed? Has it been changed recently?
Changed in 2008, which was the major upgrade.
Upgrade.
Their alteration of terrain rules. And prior to that, it was probably 10 years before there was another upgrade.
I'm just thinking of the frequency of severe storms that we've experienced in the last five years, for instance, and it seems to be a trend. I hope it isn't, but it may be.
Oh, yeah. I mean, now, that's another issue, you know. Is a 100-year storm six and a half inches, or is it seven inches, or is it seven and a half?
And how does the town's definition of 50-year, 100-year get revised? Is that automatic when the state changes its standard?
Yeah, and a short answer, I mean, it's based on the standards of practice that engineers use, and they usually refer to Rainfall Atlas, TP40, to come up with these design storms. That hasn't been changed in a long time, and that, you know, probably deserves to be updated. And until that happens, you know, engineers will continue to use that as the reference to define what a 100-year storm is and a 50-year storm is.
Who would generally take the responsibility within the Town of Newmarket, for instance, in adjusting that?
We would. We would.
We would?
Yeah, the planning board.
Because it's in our zoning regulations and our subdivision site review regulations.
What would trigger consideration of this?
Hiring a consultant to work on updating the regulations and coming up.
You'd have to have a scientific.
Would it be a change in the documents that Mr. Archery mentioned?
If the state significantly changed their requirements, that would probably trigger planning boards across the state to look at how they deal with it.
Right, to make sure that the regulations are consistent.
New Hampshire is unique. We had a lot of discussion about this ironically in our committee, because Massachusetts, for instance, makes you design to 100-year storm. New Hampshire is 50. So we decide to go with 50, which is the state requirement. But if the state decides to go to 100-year storm next year, that's only if you need a state permit. So if you do a development that does not impact more than 100,000 square feet, you don't need a state permit. The only requirements you need to meet are the planning board requirements. And in some towns, they're very lax, you know. They do a 25-year storm or 10-year storm. Others are now getting to 25 or 50-year storm. So it's ever-evolving.
I guess my point is, if we adopt a 50-year storm standard.
Yes.
And the state, just for whatever their reasons would be, and I assume they'd be good reasons, would be increasing their 50-year definition from five to seven inches per hour of rainfall, would?
Well, that's a -- okay, that's a different question. The state does not dictate what the 50-year storm is. It's a historical data that is published, and it doesn't change very often.
Okay. Well, taking the state out of it, I guess what I don't want to do is get ourselves locked into something that we don't have any control over. In other words, if suddenly the severity of storms becomes increasingly heavy.
Yep.
And we have an ordinance on there that says a 50-year storm, and to my way of thinking, the new -- there should be an increase in the definition of a 50-year storm. But if this doesn't occur, somebody is going to build to standards that are not sufficient to take care of the runoff, for instance.
And given time, those numbers will change, but it's not going to change in the foreseeable future. It's a historical data number, you know, it's a mathematical, basically, equation that they use for that. So you'd have to have a lot of years of statistical anomalies, easy for me to say, to really affect it.
Yes. I mean, I think we're talking about two different things here.
There are two different things.
Right. We're talking about the effects of the same storm given greater increase, and we're talking about redefining.
I wasn't trying to walk on your point. What I was trying to do was make a point.
Oh, yeah, no, I was just -- it's -- I understand. I understand.
So the issue, just to summarize, the issue is what storms do you design to, whether it's a 25, 50, or 100? And then the other issue is how do you define those storms, which is measured by the rainfall that's associated with those storms? That rainfall portion has not been updated in a long time. So I think what you're asking, Peter, is when that is updated, you know, whoever does it, it could be the state, it could be NOAA, a national organization, then those definitions of the 50- and 100-year storm, the rainfall associate, would change. You don't really need a change of your regulations here, because you're designing to the 50- and 25-50, you know. It's just the definition changes later.
Yeah, as long as we're responsive to the change in definition of the 50-year.
Right. Right.
Eric, as a member of the committee and an engineer, are you happy with all these changes?
I am. I am, for the most part. I was actually the one person on the committee that was pushing to go to the 100-year design because that's what I do every day in Massachusetts, but that's a state requirement in Massachusetts. New Hampshire, I don't think there's a town in the state that requires a 100-year storm design, and I don't think we certainly want to be on the cutting edge. 50 years is much better than what we have. You know, I think over time, the state of New Hampshire will eventually migrate to having to design for the 100-year storm. And when the state changes their regulations, I think that would be the appropriate time for us to change ours. So it's a long-winded answer, but yes, I'm satisfied with the changes.
Are there questions here about the, or changes regarding the paving and so on?
Yes.
That's satisfactory to you.
Yes.
Anything else in here that causes you angina?
No.
If I can ask, Eric, just one question. Would you -- is there a reason why you would not gravitate to a standard of storm, say, for instance, seven inches in an hour, as opposed to calling it a 50-year storm?
Those are categorized as 50-year storms and 100-year storms, and there's rainfall associated with those, rainfall amounts associated with those. So I think you're better off going with the year standard, because then whatever that rainfall amount, if that changes, you're automatically, I think like Bill said, you're automatically embracing that change whenever it happens. So in five years, if the 50-year storm is six inches instead of five and a half, everybody in town is going to have to be designing for six inches, because it says you have to design for the 50-year storm.
And that's what I'm interested in.
Yeah. It gives us more latitude that way. I think it's just, it's easier.
But isn't there also, in effect, the intensity and duration? It's not just the amount of rain. It's also how it comes. So it's not a simple calculation of just inches.
Well, there's three or four different types of rainfall, type three rain. It depends on how -- but to simplify it, a 100-year storm is seven and a half inches of rain, basically, in a 24-hour period. You know, a 50-year storm is, I don't know the exact number, five and a half inches in a -- and statistically, it used to be statistically, a 100-year storm meant that there is a 1% chance that you would get that storm in a year. Hence, a 100-year storm, you get one every 100 years. We all know that in the last 10 years, we've gotten seven of them, six of them, or whatever. I mean, we could go another 100 years and not get another one. You know, you just don't know.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Archery? Thank you very much, sir.
I appreciate it. It's been a pleasure working with all of you, and we started this in December, I think, of last year.
Last year, that's right.
So it's been great, and it is a huge improvement. It was long overdue. Basically, all you had was design for 25-year storm, and that was it. This is a good step up, so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And Eric, since you're on the committee, you can make the motion.
All right. First of all, I would like to say that Bill did a great job. He did a lot of work. He asked a lot of questions, and he edited things numerous times. Having said that, I would make a motion that we accept the change to the subdivision regulations and the site review regulations as outlined on the agenda with
With these changes.
With changes noted by Jessica V.C. from the Conservation Commission.
All right. Is there a second?
Second. Second by Rick or Peter.
Any further discussion? I'd like to thank, also thank Mr. Archery and the hard work that he's done, and the subcommittee. Thank you very much. And
Our pleasure.
All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstentions?
It's adopted.
Thank you very much. Next on the agenda was an application by Mr. Garvey of Garvey &amp; Company, but Diane advises me that he will be redline, and he's not here, so we will skip the next item. And we'll move on to item number four, which is a bond reduction on Maya's Way subdivision from $200,576 to $28,007. I think everyone has in their package a letter from Diane that confirms from the engineer, the town engineer, that the developer has completed the work to date required. And Diane, I think you recommend that we reduce this bond to $28,008. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Do you have any comments that you'd like to make in support of this?
No, but I do want to mention that Rick Malosky, our Public Works Director, attended the site inspection, and we sent the correspondence from the engineer regarding his recommendation on the bond reduction to Rick, and Rick was in agreement with the reduction as recommended.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we accept the bond reduction request to $28,007.
Second.
Peter gets this one, I'm sorry.
I think it should be eight, because I rounded up.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay.
We're all reading different pages.
I'm looking at a piece of paper that says $28,007. I don't really care.
I'm looking at what's in circ.
Which one are you -- oh, you're looking at the agenda.
The letter says $28,008.
$28,008.
$28,008. Do you still second that, Peter?
I still second that.
Be an important dollar of coffee.
Any further discussion?
Any questions?
Saying none, all those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstentions?
What do I do with Val's report?
Next on the agenda is old business.
What do I do with Val's report?
Justin, you're going to give us an update on the zoning subcommittee, is that right?
I will do my best. Well, in our meeting as a committee for the rezoning needs of the town, we've received some feedback from people here in town on some of the projects that they have tried to put through that may not have achieved their final goal, just to kind of figure out the things that are really stopping us, or stopping them from being able to get their projects to fruition. So some of those things, you know, might have been lot size in relation to the setbacks and buffers and -- I'm just looking at my notes here. Like I said, they're all over the place. Yeah.
Diane, do you want to?
Just a couple of things that we've decided, because of the development interest, if you will, to focus our first review on Route 108 corridor, including the golf course property, which is currently zoned in M4, which is basically mixed uses affiliated with golf course use. We also will look at the B1 district in the vicinity of, from the car wash to the railroad crossing, and that's an area that currently is zoned for business, however
the railroad crossing. And that's an area that currently is zoned for business. However, there's a lot of residential uses there currently. And the lots are configured such that it's really not feasible for those lots to be developed into commercial uses without some kind of consolidation. So we are going to be looking at the requirements for setbacks, density, and so forth along that section of Route 108. And possibly come up with some kind of criteria for issuing special, permitted uses of existing structures by, if they're grandfathered, and providing some relief, if you will, for the, some of the setback and the more onerous density requirements that really, are, don't really apply to those lots, or don't, it's really not applicable to those lots the way they are currently configured. So we're going to take a look at that in, in closer, I'm going to take a closer look at that section. Janice, did you want to add anything?
Well, that's about covered. The only thing is that we're going to be meeting again on October 13 from 5 o'clock to 6:30. The subcommittee is going to be meeting with Diane. And we always invite the public to send us some written input. And we'll be discussing, I'm sorry, forget it. Actually, I don't know if people heard me out in the TV land. Our subcommittee is meeting on October 13 from 5 to 6:30. And we invite the public to send us written comments. And the topic would be specific discussion on recommendations on amending Section 1, which is the mixed-use redevelopment, expanding 1.09 to include the BE and ME zones, reviewing criteria under 702, and adding the process under 1.09 BE into 702, and changing 109 BE subdivision to site plan, possible exemptions for 1 to 2 family units. Also, discussion on possible changes to zoning boundaries along Route 108, south of the downtown to New Fields. And we do invite the public to send us the written comments, so we can take those comments into consideration when, before our discussions. And, and at this meeting, we're going to just be coming up with a better plan to get that information for the public to give us input to our meetings. So people have ample opportunity to just provide the input to the subcommittee in advance, so we can review it. And at that same time, we don't want people coming at the public hearing saying, we never knew what was going on. So we're going to be devising a tool in a format to be using, like maybe Channel 13 to get the notices out. Maybe, Chris has a Facebook page, which is used a lot, you'd be surprised, for Channel 13. That's another good avenue to get information out to the public. But what, but the committee is going to be discussing different ways to make sure that the public is well aware of what we're discussing and to provide us the input, so we can take those into considerations for changes. Because it was helpful, the last meeting, there was a developer in town who sent us some written comments to us. And it's helpful to get that feedback, so we can make the changes. I mean, we know what we would like to see, but the input from the developers and the people who live in that area, and the whole community, but especially if you're going to be living in that area and you're going to be impacted, we want to hear from those individuals, too. Not just the developers who were denied something, which we thought had to be revisited, but from the people who are going to be impacted by it. I think that's important to get their input as well.
Terrific. All right. Any other old business? Any other new business?
Can I just ask a question?
I don't know. How many do you get?
I get three. I'm special. No. I noticed that Alternance sits in the audience when he comes. And he comes here very faithfully every meeting. And I know Alternance now can sit up here with us. And I would like to know if, I think it's just an oversight, because before it was, they always sat in the audience. And then that new ruling changed, I would like to see Rick sit up here with us.
Okay.
Of course, you can't vote if you're, no one's here.
I understand the rule.
But I would like to see him here, because he faithfully comes every week.
All right. My oversight.
No, no, I can see why, because of the way it used to be.
That wasn't a question.
It wasn't?
Wasn't a question? Oh, wasn't? I'm sorry. Well, it's a statement question.
All right.
That's all.
All right. Thank you. Anybody else? New business, old business, comments? Anything? Anything at all?
Is there any updates?
Motion to adjourn.
No, wait a minute. Hold off. Is there any updates that we should know about that could be coming, on projects that the public may want to know about, not at this time? Okay, that's all.
Okay.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
That's my
Aye.
That's my job, Rick.